Thank you. I just wanted to make just a couple of brief comments. We're in, we're starting to wind down the school year. There are a lot of activities that the schools are beginning to push out with students, year-end activities. And I hope that members of the public and members of the board are able to attend some of those as they're scheduled. Couple of weeks ago, I happened to go up to the Maritime Museum and watch the Woolwich Kids and their boat building activities. And it's really impressive what we do here in the RSU. And I don't, I don't think, I mean, I'm glad we're, in our budget, we have a communications position, which I hope the board will support, and I hope the community will support. And we have such a good story to tell in the RSU. And we just, we need to get it out there to the public. I mean, that, the boat building activity, just as an example, the kids were, the kids were all engaged. It was an intergenerational learning experience. You know, many of the mentors and the volunteers for the, working from the Maritime Museum are older, some are graduates of Morse and our school system. And the relationship between the students and those adult mentors, walking them through this boat building experience was really, was really great to see. Not to mention the fact that in the end, they produce a boat. So, and that's just representative, I think, of the activities that go on in each building. So, as you as board members and as, and hopefully as the public is made aware, parents and others are made aware of some of these activities, we can get folks to attend some of these year-end, year-end events and see what our, what our kids can and have accomplished. So, very, it was very positive, very positive. Okay, item 5.0, we have the minutes from the March 22 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by Allen, second by Lou. Any, any comments, corrections, additions or omissions? Anything? No? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda. Patrick, do you have any?
No.
Nope. Okay, no adjustments. And we have our first public session. And again, this is an opportunity to address items that are on the agenda. And if they're related to the budget, I just ask you to hold off till we do our budget discussion as part of, as part of new business. But any comments from the public? No. Okay, thank you. Staff report.
Just a quick update on the building project, the high school. Now, we did receive final funding approval from the state, and that's in your packet. You know, those numbers can still fluctuate a little bit, but it was very good news from the state. And Harvey Construction has actually begun. They, you know, started with concrete a week and a half ago. And it's been a pleasure working with them so far, so we're very impressed with them. I would like to thank the City of Bath for their cooperation and support through this process. You know, we're, you know, we had to go through permitting and just through the whole process, they've been very supportive. And we do now have a color and design committee. We're starting to get into the, kind of the more nitty-gritty of what the color of the school, the furniture will be like. So, it's moving ahead quickly, and we're in a good place right now.
Thanks, Patrick. I happen to be up at the, at the office a day this week, and Dave was there. And I asked, he got a hard hat that fit me and a yellow vest, and we just walked up to the site. And it's, it's impressive. You don't, you don't get a sense of it, looking at it, you know, from downslope, from Congress, Congress Avenue, as you drive by, or from the parking lot of the RSU office. But if you get up there on the site itself, it's, it's huge. It's huge. It's gonna be a significant landmark in Bath when it's, when it's complete. So, very good, very good. Got a hat for me? Okay, committee reports. Patrick did the building update, right? Yep. So, 9.2, Katie, curriculum assessment instruction update.
Hello? So, I actually thought I was gonna have a longer report for you today, but not all of our federal funding has come in, our numbers have come in. So, it's gonna be short and sweet for me and a longer one for next month. So, first update is actually involved with 9.3, in that Lou and I just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow is our first later start time advisory committee group meeting. It's at 1:00 at Lou's Center for, I think it's called Peace and Community. What's the address, Lou?
44 Summer Street.
Okay, 44 Summer Street. While we do have representatives, students, administrators, teachers, community members, the board, myself, it's an open meeting, so every, anyone is welcome to join. Okay? Next, I just wanted to update the board on testing.
Can I ask, do you, do you have a student?
We have two student representatives.
So, you've identified who those are?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. One 11th grader and one 9th grader.
Okay.
In terms of testing right now in all of our schools, the state testing that we're required to do, basically all is finished except for our science testing. That's the last thing that happens. And then we do have other things, like our NUIA testing that we locally pay for and have students do, and our Fanta-Simpanel testing, but that's where we are with that right now. And then finally, the piece I was going to do a large report on, I just have some initial numbers here. So, we're required every year to go over our Title I, II, and Title IV funding, and how we plan to spend that money. It doesn't shift very much in terms of, we often pay for staffing or for professional development. I do, I did tell the board last year that our funding had been decreasing. And so, just to run the numbers by you that I do have, and I'll go into more detail next time. Two years ago, we received $596,000 for Title I. This year, it's about $50,000 less. So, over the course of two years, our funding has decreased by $50,000. And this is a trend that's happening not just with us, with all districts across the state. The federal funding is down for everybody. So, we're receiving this year about $542,000. The Title II numbers, I don't have. That's, so I can't tell you our plan for how we're gonna spend the money, because I don't know our total yet, and it will be impacted greatly by the Title II. Two years ago for Title II, it was 109. Last year, it was 93. So, that was also significantly decreased. When I asked the state what was gonna happen, it was gonna, they said, stay the same or possibly go down by 5%. So, the jury's still out on that. And then finally, our Title IV funding is up by 1,400. So, it was 53, and now it's 54,400. So, I guess that's some good news. It doesn't offset the 50,000 over the last two years. And so, I'll have a more in-depth report for the board about what that means for what is funded under those different programs, and what we'll have to shift around, given the reduction in funds, next time. Okay? Any questions? Yes?
Questions for Katie? No?
Just one. So, Title I is free and reduced hot lunch, right?
It is based on two things. Title I is based on free and reduced numbers in the communities. Title II is usually based on general poverty in a town. And so, you would think it's the same, but it's actually not. They're slightly different numbers. Anything else?
The delay in getting the numbers is from the feds?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. They get them out to us very quickly once they have them. It's not the Department of Education.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, Jen? Or of Katie? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Or Katie, you're Katie. Okay, 9.4, facilities committee. Which that?
Katie kinda touched on Lightstar, because, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, Bill, do you wanna, do you wanna touch base on?
Don't you get left out.
No. No problem.
Okay, facilities met once again. Facilities Director, Dave was with us, and Superintendent Manuel. Once again, we discussed, and we've, we recommend the capital improvement projects be taken out of the reserve fund, as we did, I believe, last month. And we discussed them once again, and advocate that we move forward with those. The other thing that came up, and it came up briefly, I believe I mentioned it last month in my report, was the need in terms of the future to come up with and formulate a committee to start taking a look, a preliminary look, at our elementary school building project that's in the future. They tell us 22, but they told us number 10 with Morse, and all of a sudden, we got a call from DOE, get going. So, we wanna be prepared for that. And in order to be prepared for that, we need to put together a community, basically a community committee with representation from the board and from the faculty and community members, to start looking at the overall need, number one, and to move forward looking at sites. We've got the one school, two school issue, in terms of what we have brought forth before DOE. They've, they have visited both Dyke Newell and Fisher Mitchell, agreed that we're gonna need some help there. And at this point in time, we're not talking about a consolidated school, or two schools, but we're wide open to that. And obviously, a community committee would be dealing with that issue and making some recommendations ultimately to the board and to the school district. So, I guess that's it. We'd like to move forward, request the board's authority to move forward with the establishment of a group to start looking at the future of our elementary schools, and particularly a building project in the future.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks.
Just some recognition, individual recognition, as well as some student recognition. April 5, we had a surprise assembly down at Phippsburg, and we surprised Laura Phelps, our librarian down there, with the announcement she was the 2019 Maine Association of School Librarians Walter Taranko Award winner. The Walter Taranko Award is given in recognition of excellence in school library work within the state of Maine. It is awarded annually to a school librarian who embodies traits of collaboration, advocacy, outreach, and mentoring. So, I wanna thank Katie for being there from the district, because I had to be at another meeting in Augusta, and I think Bill went as well, and the students managed to surprise her. And we're very fortunate to have Laura in our district. So, congratulations to Laura Phelps. Next, we have JMG, March 26, had their annual career development conference. And just, I'll just list some of the results that we had for our students. We had two students have second place in job application packet. We had three students, second place in decision-making. We had two students in second place in know-it-all. I think it was a cahoot on workforce development-related questions. And we had two students, first in marketplace presentations, and one student who finished first in public speaking. So, congratulations, and they represented Morse very well. Honesty of the mind, you guys approved them going to Michigan in case they needed it, and they do need it. Bath Middle School scored very well at the state tournament in Bitterford. The sixth grade team took third place. The two seventh grade teams each took first place. So, those teams qualified for the world finals and will be going to Michigan State soon. And then lastly, I didn't do it in our session we had before this, just because we were, we were kinda busy in there, and he's, you know, he's not here tonight, but Dane Dwyer was recognized as the, received an award at a recent athletic directors conference for the state of Maine for Excellence in Middle-Level Athletic Administration Award. And so, I'd like to congratulate him as well. That's it.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions of Patrick? Financial report, Deb.
Okay, tonight, can you hear me?
Yep.
Tonight, we're talking about the month of March, so we're getting closer to the end of the school year. At the end of March, we've spent $19.6 million, and we've encumbered $7.9 million for salary and benefits to take us through the remainder of the year. So, everything is going well at this point. It appears that we'll be within budget for all of our cost centers, so that's a good thing. The same is true with our revenues. We're bringing in a little bit more interest on our investments, and, but everything else is pretty much falling within line from what we budgeted for revenues. The Morse High School project, we've spent $12.5 million. We're in the middle of all the paperwork for the bond sales, and that should happen. We should get the rates back in the middle of May, and the plan is to have a closing at the end of May, where we'll pay off those other two bands. And so, that's a good thing. Now, we hope for low interest rates. Any questions?
Questions of Deb? Did we determine, I asked the question once, I guess, the, before the bond is authorized or issued, does it come back to the board for approval? Do you know? I think, I'm not, I'm just not.
I think it was part of the original, you know, vote that we took to take on this project. But we can, I mean, it's gonna be a timing issue.
Yeah, that's why I'm raising.
Because we're looking at.
I think that you'll probably come in, Steve, to sign paperwork too, as well as.
Yeah, usually it's the board chair and I that sign it. We can send it out to the board, and if people wanna have a special board meeting to make sure everybody knows what we, you know, what we're getting for an interest rate, and before we sign it, we certainly can do that.
I guess that's it. I mean, just, we're borrowing 70 million plus, just to make sure that everyone's aware of what the terms of that agreement are. So, we'll make sure folks are aware of it. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Deb. 12.0, old business. Jen, you wanna take us through the goals?
Sure. We had a brief workshop this evening to look at Schedule B, which is Goal 4, and we made some good progress in understanding the positions, how much goes into these Schedule B time and effort it takes from the people to do that. We looked at the cost of that, and we're gonna do a little more review on some of the job descriptions, and so, some of the level of participation for some of these positions. You know, it's incredible how much time and effort and importance that these positions play in a student's life. So, we're very supportive of them, and we're gonna do a little more review of that, just to make sure that we keep on top of that, of those costs and that involvement of our staff. And that's Goal 4. Goal 1, we've constantly reporting out to the public and to everybody, every board meeting on our process with the construction project. And I was happy to see that we have, we're moving forward with color and design and things like that. I think that's when this building really starts taking shape and everybody senses, you know, and understands, this is what our future's gonna look like. All the construction and all of that is really big, you know, macro kinds of things. So, I think we're making good work on Goal Number 1. And also, I think it was a positive thing when Patrick advised that we were, we've got the state funding letter approved. You know, it's good to see every, every step as we're meeting it, and it's being accomplished, so we can keep on track for, for getting this project completed as soon as possible.
Thanks, Jen. Any, any questions for Jen on goals? No? Thank you. 12.2, capital improvement fund for FY '20 projects. This is an action item. Dave presented a proposal. I, I don't have my list in front of me, but there are several maintenance projects that he has recommended, and it was the recommendation of the administration, and I think the board was in concurrence, that some of those be paid out of the, out of the reserve fund, the capital reserve fund. And in order for the school to spend that money, we have to take a vote on it. So, I'm gonna pass it to Patrick, and maybe you can just quickly list the projects, Patrick.
Yeah, and this is in your backup last meeting, but it was Dyke, you know, we have a project at Dyke Newell School, and we have the one at Bath Middle School, and then the Phippsburg School. And so, our estimate is around $275,000 for those three projects. And facilities committee, you know, has discussed this as well. That would require a vote from you to take it out of our capital account, and then that would leave us with $75,000, but we're putting in 50 in this year's budget, so it'll leave us with, as of July 1, it'll leave us with $125,000 in that capital account.
And the projects, projects total again?
I mean, roughly, Dave has to go out and get estimates, but we're looking at, you know, with, you know, total project needs of 270 with a contingency, you know, so we're looking at 275 is our best guess right now.
So, so the motion would be to authorize the expenditure of up to $275,000 from the capital, is it Capital Improvement Fund or Capital Reserve? What's the?
So, move, Mr. Chair.
Capital Reserve. Yep. Okay.
I'll move.
So, we have a motion from Lou, and a second from Bill, to spend up to 275,000 from the capital reserve. Any, any discussion on that? We did go over these projects last, last meeting, but any, any questions? No? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you. Your summer is set.
Yeah.
13, 13.0, new business. 13.1 is a public forum to discuss the 2020 proposed budget. I will ask anybody from the public who wishes to have, raise questions on this, to step forward and do so. But also, this is an opportunity for the board to ask any further questions of Patrick and the admin team and Deb on what's in the budget proposal. On May 6, which is the next time we'll all get together, there's the second reading of the budget, and that's the meeting where we sign the warrants. This is, that will be the meeting where the board accepts the budget from Patrick and makes it our proposal, and we'll sign town warrants. So, this is an opportunity to raise questions of Patrick on his budget. Anything from the board? No? Any, anybody from the public wishes to ask questions on it?
Why, why we have people here? And also, because the board, you know, in our last workshop, it came up just a little bit. But, you know, we presented the budget, the thing, the items that make the budget go up, or if we were to reduce a program or anything. And we're not, we're not riffing any positions this year, and that's a positive thing. But we are looking at, you know, at the high school level, we are looking at doing some things differently. And one of those is still having an alternative education program, but have it look differently. And then, at the same time, by doing that, we're gonna be able to add a behavior support program at the high school, and have it be cost-neutral. And then, at the elementary level, because we've been keeping a close eye on our class sizes, and they have been decreasing slightly, we're looking at, at the elementary schools in Bath, of having an interventionist at Dyke Newell and at Fisher Mitchell. And those would be filled from current staff that we have now. So, we would take a teacher from both those buildings and have it be the interventionist. So, again, those are cost-neutral, and our belief is, we'll better meet the needs of our students. So, again, I wanted to just put that out there for you as well, as part of the budget.
Any questions? So, again, this, the budget that we have in front of us is for $33,700,000. It represents an increase of about $3.6 million. But if you take the, the new construction out, and the, for the new high school and for the tech center, the budget only increases about $1.3 million, which is about a 4.4% increase. And that seems to be consistent with, with what increases we've seen from, from districts, neighboring districts. Much of, what's that? You have a question? Okay, I was, I was just gonna say, much, much of what accounts for that increase is the new salary schedule that resulted from completed negotiations. And, and there are some additional increases that Patrick, you know, is on the last, which are laid out on the last page of, of the budget. There are some new positions. Ed tech positions largely, and enhanced music program. Two additional days for the SL teacher, outdoor classroom at Phippsburg, which adds a day. And additional funds for substitute teachers, which, which has become a fairly significant part of, part of our administrative budget. Okay.
Just to clarify, Katie, this might be for you. Was it the, the whole literacy piece that is covering, was that K to 5? And is, what's sitting in the budget now, is everyone satisfied with that? Is it gonna get us what we need?
[inaudible]
So, this amount gives us what we need? We're not gonna, it's not lacking?
No.
To go along with it? Okay, great. And so, thanks.
Okay, any, any questions or? Okay. Public, no questions. So, again, May 6, we have the second reading of the budget, and the board at that point will vote to adopt the budget and, and present it to the towns. Okay, 13.2, personnel. Patrick?
Just have one retirement, Suzanne Paul, social worker at Fisher Mitchell. Would like to thank her for 23 years of service to the district.
13.3, approval of probationary teachers. You all have the list.
So, this is something we do annually as part of statute, and it's probationary 1 to 2, 2 to 3, and 3 to continuing contract. You know, I think it was last year that you received a fairly lengthy presentation of our new evaluation system, teacher evaluation system, and our administrators, you know, take this very seriously. take this very seriously, and this is the group of teachers and staff that they are, have full confidence in moving from each level.
So this is an action item, so I'll move to approve. Second, we have a motion from Lou, second from Bill, to approve. Any questions on the list? Not? All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. Thirteen point four, approval of the Mary Meeting Adult Education Agreement. Again, we've, we discussed this at the, at previous meetings. This is our agreement to enter into a cooperative, collaborative effort to offer adult education services with, with a couple of neighboring districts, so you have a motion, Lou?
For, okay.
For the approval?
I move to approve the inter-local agreement for shared adult and community education services in the form presented to this meeting to authorize the superintendent to sign the inter-local agreement on behalf of the school board and to authorize submission of the inter-local agreement to the commissioner of the Department of Education for approval.
Is there a second? Second from Alan. Any questions? This is an annual agreement, right? Patrick?
Yes, and it also has a clause in there about, I think it's on page three. I mean, our attorney drafted this up, and we ran it by all three districts, you know, talks about the withdrawal, you know, termination if it didn't work out for us. Talks about the services that we'll have here in RSU One. So it, it basically is, all three districts were comfortable with, you know, what it contains.
Okay, that's good. And the, the reason I raise it, again, it was, as we began conversations with the Mary Meeting Adult Education entity, it was the board's firm commitment that, that this agreement would, would not diminish the services available for RSU One residents in any way, and I don't think our, our one year of trial with, with them proved that to be the case. There, there has been no diminishment of, of service, but it is something that we will continue to monitor, and I think, I think the one year that we've done so far has been very successful, both for, for our participants from the RSU and for the collaborative generally. So hopefully, it's an agreement that we'll be comfortable renewing going forward. So we have a motion. Any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. Thirteen point five, I'll pass this to Patrick. Approval of the cooperative agreement for the BRCTC Advisory Committee.
Yeah, you have it in your backup, and, you know, all the school systems that are part of our, you know, BRCTC program, we'll, the board chair and the superintendent will sign this. There's been no changes to this. It just talks about, you know, the governance structure, the funding, the evaluation of programs, so there's been no changes since, you know, over the last couple of years, actually.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Lou.
Motion by Lou, second by Bill. Any questions? No? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thirteen point six, field trip requests. Thirteen point six A from Woolwich, eighth graders to visit Washington, DC in June. This is the eighth grade, the usual eighth grade trip, right?
I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion from Jennifer, second from Lou. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. And a second request for Woolwich, fifth graders to visit Boston, the, the Science Museum. This museum and social studies enrichment trip.
I move approval.
Okay, second. Second by Lou. Motion by Jennifer, second by Lou. All in favor? Any opposed? No? All right, so we have thirteen point seven, the first reading of board policy, JLFA, sexual, child sexual abuse prevention and response. So this is not an action item at this point.
And, I mean, people from policy committee speak to this as well, if you have any comments, but this is a required policy. It's part of our annual school plan that we have to have this policy. So this is, this first draft is, you know, coming directly from main school management at this point.
Any questions on the, on the policy? I, I just have a couple. Our, our employees are considered to be mandated reporters, or?
Sure.
Yep, okay. And, and, you know, one B on, on this, it says that if the reporting employee does not receive written confirmation from the building superintendent or the building principal or designated agent or superintendent within twenty-four hours, then the employee or volunteer shall make an immediate report directly to DHHS. And, and what's not here, and what I, I'm sorry I couldn't put my hands on quickly, is, is what the responsibility is of the building principal or superintendent to report. I mean, are they, because this, this places the burden on the person.
It, it's really, I mean, and principals can speak to this as well, it really is, you know, a staff person usually coming directly to the principal or to the guidance person or social worker, and it's typically our, our building administrator or social worker, guidance counselor that makes that report, you know, and so it, it, you know, I mean, this is there, I think, just to, you know, we're all considered mandated reporters, and if that, that system failed or didn't work, that's why it's there, but, you know, it, it works well in the system, and we get copies of reports at the office, as well as they stay in the, in the principal's office as well.
Okay. I, what I'm, what I'm commenting on is, is just that this language, you know, makes it the responsibility of the employee or the volunteer who's doing the reporting to make sure that the superintendent or the building principal acts, and I was just wondering if there's similar language for them to make sure they act. Yep, go ahead.
I don't think that it's meant to imply that the, the employee has responsibility to make sure that the administrator does their job. It's to make sure that the reporting gets done because they are the mandated reporters. Under the law, ultimately, they're the one responsible. So if for some reason it weren't reported by the voted administrator, we need to make sure it gets reported.
Yeah. And then over on, well, second page, I don't know if these are paragraphs or sections. Section three, it talks about programming and, and training done by qualified instructors. And I just wonder, who, who, who does our training force in the RSU? Who trains our?
Well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, you know, provide training to all of our staff, you know, initially, and, but this is, you know, we have our guidance counselor, social workers that work with, work with students on this type of, you know, to be sensitive about exposing them to different topics around this. And also, we do bring in SASM and other outside organizations to, to do this as well, you know, with our students.
Yeah. And, and just above that, one, one last thing I just wanted, there, there's kind of a, in section two, there's a bold note that the board may wish to apply this training requirement to bus drivers, custodians, other, others, and, and is that, we have that option? And I think there's, 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 you know, it's a little bit sensitive issue for, for us here in the RSU, obviously, because individuals in that position have been contractors. I mean, is that, is that language that the, that the board feels? The comment here, and I don't know who wrote the note, but, you know, we, we have the option to expand this, this policy to include contractors, bus drivers, custodians, et cetera. Is that something the board wants to consider? With the training requirement? I think it's a good idea, but.
But what are you saying? What do we have to do?
Well, I mean, we're not doing the drafting here, but.
Right.
It, it apparently.
Training beyond where it is now.
Yeah, I mean, apparently the train, you know, what, what's covered by this policy are employees of the district.
Right.
And, and volunteers with the district, but not contractors. What do you think, Patrick?
And then the paragraph above that talks about, you know, it's a one-hour, minimum of one-hour training. New employees must complete the training within six months of hire. I mean, really, it's up to the, the board, you know, ultimately, whether we want to add in, that's, you know, additional. I mean, right now, it says all school personnel who are required to be certified, authorized, or approved by the DOE, so.
But that's school personnel, not, not contractors. I'd, I'd like to see us consider that broader language to cover all individuals in the community who have contact with, with, with our students. Any sense on that? No? Yes? Can we see, if we could see what that looks like drafted and incorporated, that'd be Okay, so at the next meeting, we will take that up as an action item or for further con, for further discussion, if that's, if that's what we want to do. Okay, fourteen point O, the second public session, public comment period. Any, anyone from the public have any comment on any issue that's on your mind? No? Okay, thank you. Fifteen point O, next meeting dates and locations. Fifteen point one, again, we have second reading of the budget, meeting on May sixth, six o'clock. It'll be at, right here, at the middle school. And again, at, at that point, the board will vote on the budget and will sign warrants, so hopefully everyone, do we have to, we have to chase down people who don't sign the warrant if, if people are absent from the meeting? Okay, so if, if there's a reason for you not to be here, that's fine, as long as we have a majority of the board here. Fifteen point two, our next regular meeting will be May twentieth at the middle school at six o'clock. If, if we, we have not had a, a finance committee meeting in the interim because we really haven't had many questions raised on the budget as, as presented, but if from, if at the May or at the Monday meeting issues come up, we'll, we'll hold the finance committee meeting in between, after that second reading, but.
And if the, on the calendar there, upcoming events, the last one, it should be Tuesday, May twentieth.
Oh, okay.
Because Monday's the memorial day.
So that leads up, yep, in the context of the budget, it leads up to the, the district budget meeting at the middle school, which will be Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, not Monday, May twenty-eighth. Okay, thank you very much. I take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Lou, second by Bill. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you.